Do we have audience participation, public comments? Department report, we're gonna do our annual review. False alarm. Alright, so we've got our. My name of transfer. Alright, so. I'm reading these here, we've got a whole bunch, we're gonna go through. One at a time. Alright, so I'll make a motion, so I'm written here in case anyone's wondering.
I've got, I've got the most update.
You haven't wanted, okay.
I wanted to be able to call it up here, but I can't access.
Is the updated one just adding bills to this, because I can go through this and then just do the extras?
There's, there's a fair amount of changes.
Okay.
If you wanna read this, read it on my computer, that could work.
That's fine.
Yeah, I just, it's, when I go to join it, it's not, it's like missing the end of being ID. Sorry, I can just, I can steer with the computer and she can.
Yeah. Alright, so make a motion to transfer $3,000 from the group health insurance account to the town hall utilities account. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And maybe I should pause for just a moment, so those are a bit out of date, I had to do some switching, changing around with bills. Just so everyone's aware, so again, all of the bill, all of the transfers are just for any accounts that are overdrawn or will be overdrawn after today's payroll and bills are processed, so. Shouldn't be. Shouldn't be less surprises.
Okay, so that one passed, um, so I'm gonna motion to transfer $6,000 from the group insurance, the health insurance, to the town hall miscellaneous expenses, including mowing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that one? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to transfer $1,000 from the select board's expense to the select board secretary's salary. Any discussion? Or second?
Second.
Actually, we should skip over that one. Is it in orange?
Yes.
Yeah, let's skip over that one.
Skip over that one, okay, so we're gonna remove that. Motion to transfer $1,797.25 from the Board of Health stipend to the transfer station salaries.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to transfer $1,000 from unemployment compensation to workers' compensation. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Motion to transfer $125 from assessors' expense to assessors clerk salary. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Motion to transfer $710 from town report expenses to elections and registration. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Motion to transfer $103 from the town clerk expense to elections and registration. Uh, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Motion to transfer, um, $4,428.75 from cemetery salary to cemetery expenses. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. So underneath that, Christopher, I see there's 1,924, but there's no transfer. Do I just, I ignore that one? There's one right here.
Oh yeah, so that is, there's two reserve transfers we're gonna need to do, but that's all finance, so yeah, you can skip that one.
Skip that one, okay.
Yeah, and actually, same with this one. Yeah, well, you'll see, if there's one that says reserves, then you're gonna skip that.
Okay.
You have a mouse.
No, wait, where am I? I don't know how to use that thing.
It's alright.
Um, where was I?
It doesn't have a wire, it's a mouse.
I was at, uh, okay, we did 1,000, we did, okay, here we are. Motion to transfer, this is a big one. $20,000 from the audit service town records to salt and sand. Second?
I can't find it.
It's not on yours, it's on here.
Everything's a secret.
Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion questions on that one? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion to transfer $18,637 from reserves to salt and sand. I can't touch that one, sorry. Uh, motions to transfer $12,697.95 from the group health insurance to salt and sand. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, any recommendation?
Well.
It can, yeah. It's just that it'll be raised on next year's levy, and, yeah, so. You can have a deficit, but it will be raised on next year's levy, so.
All favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I need to scroll down.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, just one more, so skip those two. The 200?
Yeah.
Okay, so motion to transfer $200 from group health insurance to Old Town Hall.
What's that for, Old Town Hall?
Old Town Hall is.
I know where it is, I said, what's it for?
Cover bills. Yeah. Uh, discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Yes, yeah, I know, yeah, I know.
Alright.
And then we have two reserve fund transfers to do.
So we'll let you, on finance, you can.
Do that.
Do those.
And so these two reserve fund transfers, one is to cover the remainder of the salt and sand deficits. And then the other two, they have to deal with the town clerk. They thought they would pay them earlier, but they actually not got it, because. It's not here at all, um, but the motion line is right here.
Yes, let's go. I need a motion to also. $1,924 on reserve. To the town clerk's expense. On favor?
Discussion first, sorry, discussion. Um, or second, sorry, second.
Yeah, okay, second. On favor?
Aye.
And then the second one is to transfer $18,627 from reserve to salt and sand. On favor? Second, second, sorry. Okay, so second, you, on favor?
Aye.
Are those already reflected in the balance sheet or the expenses or whatever?
So the, uh, the reserves, they might not be, like, you don't want that money exactly as accounted after the last.
There's like 20 in here.
Yeah, 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 so right now, it's about $5,000, there's really.
64, yeah.
Yeah, there's really about.
So 55, yeah.
Yeah, so there's really actually 20,000 in there, so.
Wiped out. Got it, no. Okay. Um, do we have anything else with finance to accomplish?
That's it, you've got, Janet, I gave you the forms. So, I think, starting signing those and. And then here's the prepared. Then, yeah, I think you guys can move on with your.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, I don't know what that is, see, that's. Oh, you know what, actually, I do know what that is. No, it has to do with, I, I have to do an open meeting law, like.
Yeah, yeah.
Certification, that's supposed to get it worked, so I don't know, I got this up in there for everybody.
Alright, well, thank you, finance. Finally get together. Um. Now, we also, how many more seats we have left on finance, two or one? So there's another woman in town that works for Mass Mutual that I did reach out to, that she does accounting. She, right now, she's just gotta get her kid into the garden. And then I was like, let's just revisit, so maybe in a few months, we'll revisit, and she said that she would be willing to discuss it, so that would be another nice addition, she's wonderful, so. Alright, so, um, Dave. What's that? Listen, I said, an hour. Do you have something you wanna report to us first before we start review, or are you good?
Two things, we've got a cohort that we replaced and patched, worked lately.
Okay, good.
I got in contact with a company I believe, Lennox.
Yeah.
Court over there.
Yeah.
I called and talked to him a couple of times, but the gentleman's never gotten, hasn't gotten back to me yet. I got a message today from the company up in Vermont, asked if we wanted to see you, and I said, I'll let you know July.
Okay, perfect.
So.
Christopher is working on, on some possible grant opportunities.
Okay. Or, the best, another playground.
So you and I were gonna talk today about, I was gonna try to help with the grant situation.
Yeah, so, well, I can just let everyone know, so. Talked to PBPC about that, uh, they suggested seeking what's called a PARC grant.
Okay.
So P-A-R-C.
Okay.
Deadline for that, for this round is the 14th.
Okay.
So we have to motor.
Okay.
I spoke with someone there, and they said, you know, that sounds like perfectly good eligible project.
Great.
One thing would be that, uh, prior to actually receiving the grant award, we would need to complete the updates to our open space and rec plan.
Okay.
Which I think Ken Pomea from PBPC had been working on.
Okay.
And it looks like it kind of stalled out at some point in January or February. There's a list of items he needs to take care of, so we need to follow up on that.
Okay.
And then, um, the other thing is, it would require a vote at town meeting. And potentially subdivision of this land, because that playground, et cetera, would need to become part of it. So that just.
Okay.
So that's something to consider.
Ooh, that's complicated, that can't, that couldn't happen before the 11th.
Yeah, I'm gonna be gone, so.
So, is there a next round?
Yeah, yeah, so there are future rounds, um, so we could potentially just do what we can to get our materials together.
Okay.
And then, you know, and ultimately, it is, I believe it's a reimbursement grant, so.
Okay.
You know. Uh, I don't, I don't know if you ended up getting more quotes for that playground, but.
No, it's the one, I'm sorry, I'm the other one, but yeah, so.
So we, we'll add that to our special town meeting list, and if we can get some wording, and then. Exactly what that looks like as far as, is there a trust involved, I mean, what, how do we fund things if it's a park?
Right.
Um, I don't think it's a bad idea, because we definitely have that issue with Watson in here, we keep going back and forth and trying to. Might help with that situation a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if it's like added to Watson, or if it's some part, or.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What exactly, but that's, that's the big.
So that sounds like it's a little trickier, okay.
Who's it classified as now?
It's just town hall property, because we were a school, so it was just part of the school, but it would be nice to classify it as a park, I think that's a good step, because. You know, we, we're always trying to build it up, and a lot of people use it, and it's. I would assume so, yeah. That would be really nice. Great, thank you. Okay, um, was that, those were the two things, okay, so, um, Dave, we have your. So you, what, what is, this is the annual review, okay, so we have your annual review, um, and then, just so. Um, the goals that we had talked about last time. What, goal number one had been the transition into the managing role.
Yeah.
Building relationships with the departments, gaining an understanding of the warrant process. Goal number two had been following through on inherited projects, um, getting the North Blanford project up to bid by spring. And goal number three was establishing better accounting and record keeping pertaining to equipment, material usage, and personnel. So those were the three goals that we're looking at. Okay, so, um. You mentioned this before, we break it down into, I think there's like six categories, so we're gonna look at each category and look at, um. From a range of unsatisfied to outstanding, so the first category is the job technical knowledge, um. The first part of that is demonstrating, understanding working knowledge of all phases of the job, including various techniques and skills. Um, to my knowledge, you meet that expectation, I haven't, you know, I'm, again, I'm not an expert.
Always learning more, yeah.
Always learning more.
Always learning more.
Well, that leads into two, which is remaining up to date on changes or trends, so, uh. What I put for that is that you're always making us aware in meetings of changes in prices and things that might be coming up. Um, and then my question was, if there's any PD available that you plan to attend or would like to attend.
Of what?
Any professional development opportunities.
Well, we have one every quarter with the, uh, pressure counting.
Okay.
Highway location.
Okay.
That's from, now, a whole lot of, I would say, we tend to allow, but there's a lot, maybe a pool that does know them.
Okay.
We had meetings out there, the topics vary from left to right, uh, the last topic we just had was the fuel system. How to age it, how to. Make it better for the town.
Okay.
Trying it, you know, uh, we have the computer system now, like any, any major companies have out there. Pilot and all that, you know, they had the same idea.
Yeah.
It's, um, so that'd be something to look for in the future.
Okay.
When we do, we have to start going forward with the new garage, because that one up there is gonna be dismantled. And we have a whole, a whole new island down here, you'll go on your phone or in your office to find out how much fuel you've been using, who you've been using. And you also, you also have the ability to send invoices, if you're, if you're that kind of town to like COA. Cemetery and all that, you'll be able to do that, it was.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, any opportunities that you see and are interested in definitely come to the board, and I know, I definitely would support that, always good to. Yeah, just keep us posted, do you guys have anything to add to that one?
Not for going.
Um, the third one was understanding your impact, um, of your job and function with other departments. As far as I know, um, I know you connect with other departments as needed, uh, updating us certainly regularly, um, in the TA. And you talk with fire chief, chief, I haven't had any come to me.
I, 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 I talked to the departments in town, I talked to the departments in other towns. I get your ideas, or if I get assistance with something, you know, like a little while ago, I was looking for an over rail mower with a quick. I call Huntington, says you can, you can borrow it, but you can't borrow it now because of the. So I had a whole lot of orders, and that's the one we usually go through anyway. We're out of the, decent. So we were able to use it for a little, a little over a month.
Nice.
Didn't get as much as I wanted to get done, you know, but it is what it is.
Yeah.
It, it's back to something I wanted to get done, the old plant, or some of the side streets were really bad over time.
I saw that, um, Russell had a street sweeper, and they must have wrecked it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I know, I was on Russell, I was a rest client of the day, and I was like, oh, that's a street sweeper.
Oh, now, did they, is it theirs or?
I don't know.
I know, I think they hired it.
Great, so I have meeting expectations for the job and technical knowledge area. Um, the next one is problem solving and decision making, um, the example, the couple of examples I came up with for that one. Where I was thinking, when we had the issue with the school buses in the winter time.
Yeah.
Um, I know that you went out, and, you know, were on the phone immediately talking to people, went out, met with people, um, and then I heard something with flowers recently. And that you were, you were there in the evening at the house to meet with the, um, the customer, so I. As far as I know, that, that's part of sort of diagnosing the problem, um. That willingness to take ownership or responsibility for decisions made, so to me, that one is meeting, um, expectations, I don't know if you guys are interested in.
Yeah, that was pretty nuts.
The flowers, it was still. The flowers.
The flowers was part of the worst.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, you need to share.
I have them sent to me at work, I loved it. I think they send to you in a big old bag. I said, when I worked, I said. Oh, I shouldn't have said that. With that machine, whenever you were talking about a computer, I kind of was sitting here thinking, I would like to do electronic time clock. So it goes to her without you guys having to do all the work, she can type, transpose it, right, transpose it, get it worked, right done, nobody has to run back and forth. And it's, it's, you know, simple.
So we've looked, I, I have to say, we have looked at time clocks, now, this would have been, the last time we looked at them was probably about two years ago. Um, and we've done a lot of research on putting in time clocks in the highway garage.
So I, I mean, here, there.
Yeah.
There, I mean, wherever we need, not just, yeah.
I don't know what.
Punch in in the morning, yeah, all her time would come to her, she wouldn't have to transpose anything, it could go right to the payroll station and done. Save her some time, because she's way overworked as far as I'm concerned. I agree with you to that, you know, so.
Um, I mean, it's something that we have looked into, I don't know if there's been any development in that area, but we, we've looked into it a couple of times, and we keep saying, no, it's just not gonna work for us. And I don't remember the specific reasons why, like, if it's cost effective, it might have been, um.
Well, with her being overboard and.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking of cutting out.
I don't actually do that.
Oh, who does it? I thought you did.
The payroll department does.
We have one of those? Well, still, we'll help them.
I think the last thing we talked about was something where you check in on your cell phone, that's what I'm saying. Because there's no more time clocks, is there?
You have a badge that you wear.
Oh, I like.
You swipe it.
Alright.
I got one of those in the cellar.
Okay, alright.
She makes me use it, no, I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
I think it's, uh, we need to have a key situation for the fuel. We've talked about it, I talked about it, Granny and I talked about it with the people before him. It's only because I don't think the highway department should be held responsible for all the fuel that we're using. Otherwise, you know, the fire department comes in, they fuel their trucks, I fuel the sunup every stop, if you have a key system.
Yeah.
Where, you know, they go in, the key turns the pump on, it goes to that department, and then.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, the system we have is.
Oh.
Yeah.
No, antiquated.
Okay.
It's like an honor system.
TJ, they have them that you can do it with your phone, so each guy can do his own phone, swipe it, it turns the gas pump off, records everything, and it's done.
That was the class I was telling you about, that stuff.
Yeah.
Everybody would have a, a pop for the vehicle, every vehicle would have one, you know, I'm talking about the little tractor. Big tractor, all your vehicles, and all that stuff, and now you have to go live and stuff.
That's fine, but three people could use that tractor in a day, right? I, I'm just being, playing the bad guy.
So we have.
One tractor.
We have had, um, discussions on the gas card, um, in the past, it's been dropped, I don't know, again, it was a financial thing, but if you have time and that's something you wanna research, that's definitely.
They said the, the basic system is $10,000.
Yeah. It's not cheap.
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna move on to planning an organization, um, so this is planning effectively, um, to produce required volume, to meet production. Meeting deadlines without jeopardizing quality, um, seeking opportunities to increase productivity or eliminate waste. And reprioritizing, um, as needed, carrying out work assignments and tasks within budget. Um, so we were within budget, um, there was the plan ahead to purchase the salt for next fiscal year at that price. There was discussion about eliminating, um. The waste with the mill, the millings.
Right.
Road and what you're gonna, so I know you have a plan for what you're gonna use for that, and as far as I know, you were within budget, I didn't see any loops and things around, but there wasn't anything.
For budget.
Your overall budget.
I, 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 oh, no, first time doing it.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I have meeting expectations on that one, um, do you guys have any questions?
No, I, I have, uh. Improvement needed because, uh, like, some of the workshops on Buell Land Road and Sanderson Brook Road. They degraded it, but then wind roads were left at the edges of the road, so the water stayed in the road.
No ditches, uh, no ditches.
No ditches, no, the water couldn't reach the ditch because of the wind, but, uh, other than that, uh, you know. That's basically where I'm at.
So Buell, Ian, and Sanderson were up?
Yeah. And, and some of the people that live on South Street have complained about the ditches not existing, it's like a big drop off, Dave, so.
That's, that's.
And that was something that you were left with, I understand that, but it, it needs to be addressed.
But if you noticed, I, I don't know, the last time you went down there.
The last week or the week before.
When you come around, it's.
The corners.
When you first come in, on the right-hand side, they started putting material down along the edge, and I, I. I really like to get a side, give it a side wind, the back of the truck. The back of the truck. And what it is, it's, it's a chute with a conveyor belt, put material in it. The reason that I'll be dumping to it and it shoots everything off and through the ditch instead of using a bucket or an excavator or whatever to reach in there, pull it out and put it in.
Pretty expensive though, aren't they?
I, I see it was like seventy thousand dollars.
That's all? Oh, we should get three of them.
Well, we got two big trucks.
I think we got enough equipment to make it work.
Um, okay, so next up, I have communication, verbal and written. I have exceeds expectation in that category. Um, with the weekly reports to the select board and the TA um and the excellent reports I've been getting with reaching out to residents, um, I feel that that would be an area that you exceed expectation in. You guys have.
I, I, I don't know enough about yet spring weeks to know what's going on and it's not. I mean, do you have a gas card so I can drive the roads around because it's a little expensive. We do.
We do have a truck.
The Dodge?
Yeah. So if you were to go to like um, uh, Tom and I went to a meeting in Mass.
Oh, I understand. I'm bitter at him. I probably would never use it to be honest with you.
Alright, so next up, we have um, I know, this is, I'm raining it, raining it. Um, interpersonal skills and teamwork. Um, this would be demonstrate, demonstrating ability to establish and maintain effective relationships internally and externally. Uh cooperating, be flexible, working with coworkers, awareness and management to complete a job. Treating all employees and customers with dignity um and respect. I haven't heard otherwise. Um, I have, you know, between a meeting or exceeds expectation on there. Um, again, the flowers. Uh, so I, that's where I am with that one.
On the flower thing, I, I did, I did hear a good compliment.
That's. Yeah.
Is that um somebody drove by, we saw him to a gentleman here. I'm really surprised to see that somebody there from the highway department so soon.
Yeah.
Talking about soon, I, I think the old town hall, there's so much sand around that, that needs to get cleaned up. It's sitting on the building. I, I get a shovel and a boom and your little tractor and I'll do it for you if, because I don't, it needs to be done. It's rotting the wood out.
Is it?
It's been there three years. And I've had a couple of people talk to me about how come it's like that? So it needs to be done. And a pile of bush that they left in the back. Fire department cut all the trees down. No, no, I didn't know if you knew that.
Once the guy starts slowing down a little bit. Truck over each other and I'll check it all out. Do you want any in the yard?
I say no either and I'm being nice the way I'm saying it.
Uh, okay, so I have adhered, next one is adherence to company policy, safety.
I gave them least expectations, but I'm thinking he has to be more of a boss, you know, and uh, because you know, since the guy's out on the job. And then he has a bunch of paperwork to do and I think he's gotta go off and check up on the guys. That I hear uh people saying our trucker over there, uh, what is it, dad or whatever it is.
Don't forget at McDonald's too. How long is your lunch? A half an hour? You can't drive there and eat lunch and come back in a half hour. Impossible.
They did it properly, they could.
Have one guy bring lunch back?
Exactly.
Very good. Glad to hear you say that.
That, that's gonna be addressed next week.
Yeah, okay.
You waste too much time.
Yeah. So it's up to you to pick some button.
Kindly. Um, okay, adherence to company policy, safety, I have um meeting expectation there. Being safe area, I honestly have been in the highway department a year, so I don't know. Uh, properly interpret and apply the uh department policies, maintain safety.
And do we do our PMs on time?
Yeah, yeah, we do. We try to do it once a year. Full, full change, one of the filter hydraulics.
Now, oh, you, you go by mileage or?
No. If we did that, sure, our brand new Max, our small cannon.
Yeah.
Um, it's got nine thousand miles on it. It's not going to hit twelve hundred or the two thousand mile range at least.
Yeah, it was years.
Okay, yeah. Uh, and that did come back from the shock and we did realize that the oil filters on it. It'll be underneath, right. Well, that's another reason why, you know, try to.
So you take that to a, to a factory, uh, service?
Oh, yeah, I'm pretty good at that. So, I know we use the service on the over rail mower. Couple of others are right, oh yeah, that's. That's, that's a one a year thing, you know, and when it rolls around, all, all the big trucks, all small trucks will get serviced, prepped and ready. Right now, we're still doing a little while and it's on the uh.
Is the power boom up and running? Well, the one for the tractor for Kubota.
Oh, yeah, I just don't be around it.
I, no, I just heard it was broken and I was curious, that's all.
Yeah.
You know, you hear so many things, I don't know what's true, what's not true, sometimes.
Go to the source.
That's right.
Self-management skills, uh, displaying confidence, remaining in control when handling difficult situations. Um, demonstrating ability, flexibility when handling change, a sense of cooperativeness by being open and positive when receiving direction or constructive feedback. I think clearly um there's a meeting where it exceeds expectation there. Um, I think that you have done a good job of receive, receiving feedback. Sometime uh this guy can be a little bit harsh. Um, I think you handle it well. Be very organized, um, and you seem willing to um seek and, and take advice.
Wow.
Told you, when we get in a bar fight, you know.
In a bar at your age.
Um, I, I can still reach the bar.
One, two, three.
When we go to our uh, our goals and objectives from last time. I have that you, um, the first goal was that transitioning into a management role by building relationships. Um, and understanding the warrant process, I think you need um, reached that goal. I haven't had any concerns with, uh, you know, your budget was great.
Yeah.
Um, you're getting your bills in on time. Uh, you're working well with other departments, so I would say that that goal has been met. Um, the second one, uh, following through on inherited projects, so we've got the North Blanford Road project, which is rolling along. Um, as expected, you know, you talked about it being a bit delayed to start, but that's not, that's beyond your um control. Um, and then we just talked a little bit about South Street.
I got a question about Sperry Road, in a corner you dug a hole there, somebody dug a hole. Isn't there supposed to be a, a manhole there or something? It, it's about, right on the corner, when you come up right on the Sperry Road, there's some, there's a hole about this deep. I didn't stop and get out and measure it, but it looks like they used it to get the water out of there. It doesn't need a manhole, if a collar had drove into that.
I know, I know that there's a strength like that.
Yeah, but shouldn't have a manhole so you can get it, go down the side of the road there or something?
If we pull in, left or right side?
Left side, if you're pulling in, it'd be on your left. That's pretty deep. If somebody got in there, I'm just kinda concerned, that's all. Yeah.
Is there any way we could put a brake problem back?
That's kind of, yeah, something would have made, something to get, I just think it can put some ripper around it, so it's not two or three, it's probably three feet deep. You've probably seen it more than I have.
I, I did look at it.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Yeah.
Just concerned about it, somebody, you know, the liability and stuff, that bothers me.
You know, you know, stuff like that is, you know. I like when somebody brings to my attention, because sometimes I don't see it. And I'm, I'm looking for one thing and something else to talk about. It's like going down Sperry Road, you know, you look at it and say, oh my god, the drainage. Look at tree camp, you know, and everything's hopeless on one thing, you come back and you just look around the corner and keep on going.
And you watch out for cars coming out of there, so, yeah, I get it.
You know, and that's, that's another thing too. Something really need, has to be done up there. Because you really can't see over that hill.
What's, now we put the mirror up, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. In front of the mirror now.
Yeah. That noise just right there, the cars.
And we push back the brush as far as we can.
There's no brush there, that's the problem. It's all rock, lots of rock. And if, if we were, I would have to get permission from the landlord. We'll probably have to rent a bigger excavator. See what we can do, just lower at least the left side of it so you can see a few of the ditch we'd be at.
Have you approached the landowner yet?
No, I, 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 I think that's according to the son.
The brick house, yes.
Yeah.
I know there was concerns about that, you know, years and years ago that.
Yeah.
They're supposed to, somebody was supposed to somehow lower the hill and all that stuff. But I.
That would be worthwhile because it's, it's definitely a concern of that.
Yeah, there, there used to be a barn on that corner.
Oh, was it really?
Yeah, and uh, I think it was Mike Wilkirk. You know, people were complaining about it, so he was down in towards town, he didn't realize it was private property.
No way. No, he realized that, he just figured he'd ask for forgiveness instead of permission.
Yeah, I was being nice.
I was nice about it.
Alright, so um, third goal is establishing better accounting and record keeping pertaining to equipment, material usage and personnel. Um, I don't really have, do you feel that you've met that goal?
Well, it's really nice to have four crews. So I can divide them off and both to do different things on the road. Um, as you can tell, I went down in North Blanford, you know, I had both guys work on one end. Work at the far end and meet in the center a little bit and then I just pulled them out. Bringing the other, the other mini excavator off and you started working going down to the bottom of the hill.
Okay.
That's almost, almost done.
Who's, who's operating the bucket?
No, we're not digressing. We need to keep on track.
No, no, I, this is all a part of it. Who was operating the bucket over the other day? When they were bringing that up over to put behind the cemetery.
I always think of what day it was.
Uh, it, it had to be.
It was Thursday.
It had to be Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday.
Yeah, it could have been James, yeah.
James, yeah, because uh, when they bring it in, can they kind of just like spread it? Because they're going down into the dip there or maybe.
Level it off a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, like I told them, black, blue, they were down, but, yeah.
Okay. Um, so back to our topic again. Do you feel that um you have more progress to make in the goal of accounting, record keeping, um pertaining to equipment? Material usage and personnel?
There's always room for improvement.
Okay. Enough from where you feel like you want to make that one of your goals for next, for your next year review?
So we're, you know, we're about to have this capital improvement plan, we're gonna be rolling out. Part of that is gonna be documenting capital assets that every department has. So that'll certainly contribute to kind of accounting for everything. And then, you know, highway system kind of an unusual position because we have the union. So when it comes to personnel and all that kind of stuff, it's a little bit more complicated, but we are gonna have. Um, you know, we're going through this human resources study right now and hopefully at some point we'll be able to kind of bring in. You know, all, all of the materials you have.
Right.
For your guys and kind of.
Roll into one.
Exactly, so it's not, because right now it's kind of piecemeal and.
And it's been that way for decades, you know, right?
Okay, yeah. So then for your, one of your goals for next year, what I put was um just participating in the capital improvement plan with TA. Um, so then I would say, I would like to add something about the new highway garage, but there's a lot of that that is outside of your ability to control. So what would you like to set for a goal as far as something that you can, is within your control pertaining to the new highway garage?
The new highway garage? I would like to see a um, some decision, you know, in your future to get started.
What is something that you can control as your goal to, in participation with the project? That you think, because so the, I mean, that is like, there's all sorts of, you know, pieces to that.
Right.
So I don't feel that it would be fair to put a goal of, you know, reaching this certain stage in the highway garage, because that's out of your control. What do you think as far as like your participation would be a, a fair goal to set for the year?
That's kind of, that's kind of hard. We're having a meeting actually this week, oh, sorry, next week.
A bit French, but.
We could put like um consistent participation and um coordination with, what is the department?
Yeah, the OPM.
Oh, yeah. Um, so we could just have that as a goal and that means that you're continuing to participate in meetings and help to push the project along.
Yeah. Now.
Think carefully. We're setting goals.
Yes, uh, now that uh Tommy is no longer a swatman. And.
Are you volunteering, take over spot?
No, 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 I'm not. I, I think you could still be on it.
Yeah, that's what I told you.
Yeah, absolutely, but you know, I would like to participate again if you.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Oh, yeah, because since Tom's not a select board member.
Correct.
Yeah, 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 so it's not a forum, so, yeah. So, and tell me when the next meetings are and uh, I'll arrange my calendar for.
I wanna be on it too.
You can't.
Can't, you can't.
You can only do, here's the deal, if you, if TJ doesn't go, you go, but you can't both be there.
Yeah, so when I'm in Florida, you can go.
Does that make sense?
Yes, I am. No, I, we each can go. Are you flying?
What, um, so how many other goals in mind that you'd like to set for the next year?
I have, there's, there's a lot of goals out there. Most goal, but I've never been finished enough because they're so far out in the future.
So something that's feasible.
Um.
Flower boxes for the highway garage.
Oh, exactly, yeah, I, I know where I get flowers from. Uh, I, I, I'd really like to, you know, keep going with the drainage work and it's major works I can.
Okay.
That's very important.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, that's, that's probably, you know. That's expensive, but not really expensive, it's just time consuming. Um, the next project back to back, if you're talking road wise, looking at tree camp. I'm gonna have Jeff Street come off probably, you know, as soon as he can. But he's tree trimming coming off, just to roll. You ever been up there? Daylight and it's not daylight, it's dark up through there. I did a, I did a quote for a price to a northern for one day, for one month to do tree trimming. It was roughly almost forty thousand dollars. And that may get you a half a mile, three quarters a mile or, or what, it all depends on the situation. And there's a lot, a lot of work of it needs to be done, you know. This year, I'm gonna try to, um, and I know the money is, is gonna be a hard part this year. Because of inflation, it's coming along.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm thinking, well, I think I'm gonna, I'm probably doing it next month or so, is um night work. I'm gonna have it swept all the way through and I'm gonna have the um two, two of our big nets down with uh blacktop. And we're gonna take care of all the spots.
Excuse me, but when you do a road crossing, any contractor that does a road crossing, within two weeks, they should blacktop that. Just like every other town and city does. They have to blacktop it, it should be included, included. I was down there yesterday and it's like, by where they put the one by the ski area.
Yep, the Culver.
Yeah, it's already washing out and so was the other one, so that needs to be included when you do a contract. Everybody else does it, Connecticut, every. Everybody else does it, Connecticut, every state, every town, within two weeks of finish, they let it pack down, it should be done and paid. With coal patch or, I'm just saying, whatever.
If it's in winter time, we can do coal patch.
Well, that's what I'm, whatever it needs to be, at the time, the area, do it, it needs to be included and stuff.
Um, so I think we have some pretty good goals set for you. So what I would like you to think about is, when you're talking about improving drainage, drainage is just a really broad goal, like you to think about. A way that we can figure out how you met that goal, so we maybe throw a percentage on it, like improving drainage on so much, you know. Maybe eighty-five percent growth, whatever, same with tree canopy, so I don't need that answer from you right now, but if we could throw that on there and make it a more measurable goal, that would be helpful. So overall, I've got, you know, excellent gain, meeting expectations on ninety percent, the other ten percent were exceeding expectation. I think we talked about a couple concerns or things that we had wanted you to have an eye out for. Do you have any questions or comments for us to add to the review?
Can I just, one of the things that, an eighty-five percent goal, trying to fix your ditches, you never know what you're going to run into when you get in there.
Sure.
So that's a hard number to read, he might be able to do a hundred feet and then run into something where he can go ten feet in three weeks, so.
Understood.
That, that, I just wanted everybody to be aware of that could be a problem, you know. Because remember when they did the retaining wall, they didn't even know it was blacktopped under there.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and we can definitely take that into consideration when we're looking at meeting.
Don't want to go too high on it, because it can be tricky.
Yeah, because you know, you, you got your mindset, I'm going to get the whole crew out there and we're going to get this thing going, all of a sudden. We got, yeah, there's always speed bumps somewhere.
One of the last, in the wintertime, because I, I'm just asking because I'm new, do you have anybody on call during the week? Yeah.
Everybody.
At night, no, no, so what I'm saying is if they had a tree come down and storm, do you got a guy that can go out first before you can even get here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if they did or not.
Yeah, well, what usually happens is that.
You probably get the call, I assume.
Yes. Safe place, local place, and I call one of my guys up.
Perfect.
But, since we have four guys and the biggest issue now is safety, is that I'm going to be starting to send out two people out for trees.
Oh, absolutely, I agree a hundred percent with that, so, absolutely, trees are.
You never know which way, which goes the wrong way.
Yeah.
That's why they call them woodow makers, branches, so, very true.
Makes sense.
No, that's, that's absolutely the right thing to do.
Anything you want us to add?
No, I'll pick them all up, are you all set, are you all happy, please?
I think we're good, I've got this copy, if you want to sign it, I'll pass that around. These are all our old copies. Alright, so with that, I would, so I have a contract renewal. Have you had a chance to look at the contract renewal, Dave?
Just the back part?
Yeah, just that last part.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yes.
Mind if I take a look at that real quick?
Yeah, sorry, one.
So there is two, there's another copy.
Okay.
So Dave and I had spoken about potentially amending that to include a two and a quarter increase automatically thereafter, years thereafter.
Okay.
That's not something we need to decide today, because it's going to affect, you know, next year essentially.
Okay.
So that, you, you could sign that and that could still be.
Okay.
Something that we do, but I just wanted to bring it up.
So Dave, you have a chance to talk this over then?
Yes.
So, um, so this is our contract, it is for our, for a year.
Yep.
Okay, no, is your reference year, yes, for year two, sorry, I, the way that I read it was confusing. The term services highway and provision of this agreement are to commence on July first, twenty twenty-two and be completed on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, okay. Town agrees to pay highway superintendent annual salary of sixty-five thousand for year two services we pay on a biweekly basis. Annual increases thereafter, if any, will be determined by the town based on highway superintendent's annual performance evaluation. An increase will take effect at the start of the new fiscal year during the term of this agreement. Okay, and so then the rest of the contract makes the same. So I would make a motion to approve the contract agreement between Town of Lanford and Dave Walden, highway superintendent. Any discussion on this?
No, I'm sorry, I was reading it, I hadn't.
No, I'm on favor.
Hi.
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 Okay, so I'm going to sign my copy, Dave. And then I'll pass this company. Alright. Um, I think that's it for Dave, we have a couple other contract renewals too.
No appointments.
And we do have an appointment. Um, so Eric McFay has offered to do assessors again, we can appoint him to fill a position for a year. He was really great in the last position, I think him and Dave Hoxton worked well together, helped us with this new RFP. So we would have three people on the board with that, so I would make a motion to appoint Eric McFay to the Board of Assessors for term June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, to the next election.
Who doesn't say that?
That's what I said though. Keeping Mary Cronholm happy.
Okay, I would test for group, exactly what I was thinking, which is.
Uh, is there a second on that?
I second it.
Oh, sorry, any discussion? He is spicy, I know, I know.
I, once I get over my shyness, I'll be doing it.
Oh, I can hardly wait.
Oh, yeah, you probably can't.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, alright, there you go, there's that one. Alright. Alright, so we have two contract renewals, we have one for the treasure and one for accounting. So these are included, this is the budget that we approved.
Yeah.
Okay, so these amendments or renewals are just updating with the current budget that was approved at town meeting. So the first is for, I would make a motion to approve the contract agreement between the Town of Lanford and Eric Kernscheff. For July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion?
Where's the contract to read on these?
So the contract remains the same.
Continuation, well, I didn't know what it is, so I'm going to, it remains the same for you, but not me.
The contract remains the same, the only thing that's changing is the compensation.
It went down?
Nope.
Six hundred dollars or more.
It's, it's what was voted at town meeting. So if you want to look at copies of the contracts, you're welcome to, just ask Christopher, and he, he has them on file, or, or Mary, I think. Works also have copies.
So, well, this one's acceptable.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Um, alright, so we'll leave it there. Uh, next one, we have a motion to approve the contract between Mass Munifin, Treasure and Collector Services. For July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Discussion.
I don't see, that's an awful big number.
So it is an awful big number.
Um, have you looked into any other resources besides just signing and going?
So we have, so let me give you a little history on how this came to be. So we, we were in, as you know, a very bad place. Um, and we, the town had agreed to let us go to appointing these services instead of electing people. We put out the RFP, people bid on it, the best bid was Mass Munifin came in, and when we started, there was, it was, we were paying more. Because Sarah was putting a lot of time and energy.
A lot of time to pick up all the mistakes.
Resolving the thefts and all that jazz. Um, so this is actually the last year, I believe, of her contract.
Yeah.
Um, so we've been weaning it down, and so this includes what she pays for everyone that works there. This is not just to Sarah, this is that whole department. Um, so it does feel like a lot, but I would say that the town has gained significant amount of money since we've had her working for us and Eric Kernscheff.
So, is this the one that sent out all the foreclosures or tax payments that were late? Is this the department that would do this?
They would send out, yeah, that would be that.
So ten years have gone by and they, we're paying them this kind of money and they let all that money go?
Well, they weren't here for ten years.
Yeah, they've only been here for.
They, they came in, picked up the mess.
Oh, just recently, two, oh, okay, I'm trying to figure out why these numbers are making.
Yeah.
Now you see what, I got it now.
I know where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, and it's understandable, Jeff, because if you haven't been, he, you know, to every select board meeting and understanding the whole process. I know that there's a lot of discussion and confusion out there. So like, it's helpful to ask questions, that's fine.
And I'm not shy.
And it feels like a lot of money, and I, I see, and if I just walked in and saw that, I would feel the same way. Just because we've been part of it, I, I understand the worth of it. So, but yeah, feel free to ask questions, I understand it's a lot of money, but this is our last, this is our last year with her. And she's trying to work us, believe it or not, she's like, I'm trying to get you to a place where you're not paying so much, and I'm training someone to take over for less, so.
Alright, I'm just needing some of these answers, I'm really curious. I wasn't, I was making a statement.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Alright, so I think that's, you guys have anything else for us? Yes.
We should talk about summer hours.
Summer hours, I'd love that, let's talk about summer hours. Year round, that, so listen, what we did last year was we went to every other week, and then if they needed us, they can, you shine your back, that light, and we come. But, uh, you don't have to say anything.
I know, you're waving at me, I was wondering.
Sorry. So do you guys want to go to every other week, so it would be starting, you kind of already started, because we're not working Monday.
Monday.
Okay, on the eleventh, so if you want to start on the.
The other thing is, so we should probably have another joint, then come select board meeting on the fourteenth, just in case there are any last minute transfers that need to be done.
Okay, so the fourteenth is, I'm away, that's a Thursday, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I am away that day, I'm here the thirteenth though. Which is Wednesday.
Alright, I'm away.
You're away. You can, you can have it without me, I just, you'll have forum.
No, we won't, because I'll be in Florida.
Oh, you're in Florida?
I'm going to a car show.
There you go, there you are.
Can anyone attend virtually? If we're still able to do that, I believe.
I think so, do we have to have a forum here first though? You have to double check that policy, because I think we have to have a forum physically, and then someone can attend virtually. But that, that may have changed during COVID. But I don't know if it ever went backwards, but if that's the case, I will be in the car driving to Lake Jordan, if I have service, I can zoom in.
I gotta find out what kind of service they got down, or where I'm going to be, it's a, it's a park, and I don't know if it's cable. Ever they have a wifi setup or what kind, but it's a park service, so I'd have to get the, you know, code for using their wifi.
Okay. Um, so I would make a motion to start going to every other week for summer hours, starting today, which would mean we're skipping next week, which we are anyways to support. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So.
Always have one, anyway, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when, and if we need to change.
I mean, I'm always here, ten o'clock in the morning, it's fine with me.
No, that's around when I wake up, so.
What? Oh my god, after day's gone.
Summer hours are amazing. All year, I'm on the five thirty, this is.
You want to make a motion?
We did.
You did.
We prepared, and I second it.
You second, sorry.
Alright.
Unanimously.
Alright, um, do we have anything else? No, this is for Jennifer, I, well, the trick was that I actually don't need to leave at five thirty, but I do have to go home immediately. Why don't we put it on an action item to discuss in September? Does that work, and then we can, um. We can sort of figure it out. Yeah. I think I have a lot of extras, I'm going to toss these.
We've got like five of them, you're wrong.
Yeah.
We just wanted to see if I was catching up.
Okay, so I'm going to toss that.
Yeah, I got four.
And then this is.
I have these for you to sign.
Oh, I already signed one of these. Did you get, this says original for my signature, but I already signed one, this is a contract with Dave. Oh, this was from last week.
That says draft on it, I think.
So do what you mean, close the meeting at five ten.
Make a motion to close.
Done.
Second.
Yep, that's what we said.
Yeah.
So that's for the slide board.
Nope.
You're going to let us know, because we do have. Anything else that's going to have to be transferred would be minor. You're not going to be here though, right?
I'm not going to be here. That's the only reason to do the fourteen, if you want, you could skip your meeting on the eleventh and just do the fourteen, but it sounds like that's going to be tricky for their schedule, so.
It's going to be what?
Yeah.
Tricky.
Everybody's on it, if you want.
Cause they're, they're traveling, so. Here, I'm sorry.
How much want about the children?
I bet you they had cookies and stuff. So now when I see them, I'm going to go make sure mommy takes you for ice cream.
Katie's open now all week.
Charlotte took out a box of macaroni and cheese, and she's going to make macaroni and cheese, and I said, you're not making macaroni and cheese until you eat the leftover macaroni and cheese in the fridge. And so she just walked away and ate nothing.
Really?
It was a mommy dearest moment, I was like, that's fine.
And your mom would want to get more stressful as she gets older.
Just remember how you were.
I was a.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, she'll lie and you'll swear to.